So we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? If that was anything motion to approve it as presented?
There is one.
There is one here.
Add a new business.
So will they motion?
Motion to add a new business, support.
So we have a motion for the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. We have agenda.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot that one. Has it all been taken?
Yes.
Okay, we're good with that. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone will please rise and join us to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you very much. And we'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Glad to see a bunch of our local college students have joined us. It's like some professor got to their inbox. So it's good to have everybody here. Okay, next up, approval of the minutes of the October 22nd, 2024 regular meeting and the October 29th, 2024 special meeting. Have motion support. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on down to resolutions. We have to consider a resolution ratifying the investment of city funds this evening. And before us tonight, we have one. It looks like it's a CD at a commercial bank for four and a quarter. Your pleasure.
My checker.
Support. Have motion support. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried. Moving on to reports of officers, boards, and committees. Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commission may receive, remove any of the items within the section for individual discussion and vote. Before us tonight, we have the Alma Police Department October 2024 report, the Alma Transit October 2024 report, the October 2024 building permits report, the Alma Fire District October 22nd, 2024 draft meeting minutes, the finance report, and the city manager's report. Your pleasure on receipt of these reports.
Move to receive one through five.
Support. Okay, we have motion on one through five. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. We've received the first five reports. Your pleasure on the report number six, the city manager's report.
Move to receive six.
Support. Okay, we have a motion support. Eric.
All right. Yep. On the election update, the clerk did provide a short memo on the evenings, or I guess more than evenings, ultimately a long days, election results. Overall, 60% of our 6,525 voters, registered voters, did vote in the election, which is up a little bit from our 2016 presidential, 16 election, 59 and a half. That's, that's a very good turnout. If you want to break it down further, 31 and a half voted absentee, 14, 31 and a half percent voted the early voting center, and 54% voted in person on election day. So folks did find a way to, if they're, they're valid tasks. And just thanks to all the volunteers for all the early voting, the, of the election, and I think for speaking for the clerk, that thanks very much for folks stepping up and doing that, because without them, it just doesn't happen. So thanks to everyone involved, and thank you, Sarah, for all your work over those many days. Thank you. Transit updates, we have a couple grants that are in process. We were fortunate enough to receive a portion of $551,000 from the state of Michigan for, through their advanced transportation technology innovation program, which will install thermal cameras on our buses and vans in our fleet. We were one of four agencies that were chosen for that. This is a pilot program. And so one of the benefits is, we're just talking about deer collisions here before the meeting. This will help alert the drivers before you actually just see the deer would, you know, catch them. So that's part of it also, to make it safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, and anybody else that is not necessarily in a vehicle. And then on our transportation software, that has been very close to being, dispatch software is being very close to being out and usable. Right now, we're looking at the first week of December. The transportation director did put a, just a quick little coming soon on the website page for folks to start to get used to, and as more information comes up, we'll be putting that on there. Like we discussed earlier, the software allows folks to book their rides via an app, be able to see from the app where their, their ride is at, located within the city to come pick them up. And typically, these are our biggest calls into the dispatch center for, for the transit center. So that should help out with staffing and, and make everyone's life a little easier from the user side of things as well.
If I could interrupt you for a second, I'm sorry. You can book on the app. Can you also pay on the app?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It will be night and day from what we've ever had.
Good, that'll be a huge improvement. I know that's going to be useful.
Yes. Staff out there is very excited about it. Housing Commission separation wording, we have that on the agenda tonight in unfinished business, so we'll talk about that in that discussion on the agenda. Did want to make the commission aware, we did make the planning commission aware at last Monday's meeting, that the owner of parcels that have 312, 314 North Lincoln, and 315, 319 East Superior Street, we'll be demoing those structures, those are houses. And there'll be some tree removal on those parcels as well. We just wanted to let the commission know about that. And when those demos start, that citizens asking questions, that you know this was initiated by the owner of those parcels, and they're, they haven't really come, came to us with a full-on plan of what they're going to do with those vacant parcels once they're done. They have been talking about residential. So what level and how many units, or whatever it may be, that is still to be determined. But if folks ask what's going on there, it isn't something that the city initiated, and it is a privately owned parcel, so it's nothing that we can say, hey, you can't do that. So just to make everyone aware. Water and street project updates. For our water meter replacement program, we have 488 water meters that have been replaced. Another 481 meters are scheduled to be replaced out of the 1,524 letters that have been sent out in the first round. The second round letters for the first round properties will probably be sent out within the next week or so. Those that have not responded, that force 14, 1,524. So that's going well. Our contractor is staying very busy. On Moyer Street, things have gone pretty, very well, actually, from a standpoint of getting the sanitary sewer and the water hookups completed. As you can see from the notice there, we did run into a problem with some storm drainage on that, that section of the road, which is not always common, but when a street like this is built, they were using ditches and, and swell, drain swells, those sort of things. So over the years, those have filled up, and they'll learn probably the best way to handle them going forward. So the engineer and staff are looking at possible solutions for that for the long term. And as we discussed before, we're pretty much ready to just kind of gravel that in for the winter. Consumers will be in the November to put the gas line in, and they'll work on the rest of the project in the early spring, but we will have to take care of that drainage issue there. And we'll be coming back to the commission with whatever proposals we have to talk about potential costs, and hopefully it's in, within our budget. And then lastly, just to keep the commission aware of the upcoming activities, there's still a bunch of them to happen here very soon. Saturday, November 16th, at the library is the now annual holiday photo event, where folks can sign up, and that, the link there is how folks can sign up to get their free picture taken in front of the fireplace and, and Christmas decorations for the holidays. Making Spirits Bright activity is December 7th. They're coming up for the holidays, it's December 13th. Jingle Bell Run is the next day on the 14th. And then, again, the home tour for this year is on Sunday, December 15th, as a typo, on Sunday this year, not the 14th. So just to keep everybody aware of those dates, and hope to, holidays are just here. That is it.
Okay, who has the first question? Okay. Hearing none, we have a motion on the table to accept the report. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried and the report is received. Thank you. So we got L, new business, we're to consider a resolution to amend the resolution number 2024-0303, which was previously adopted on October 22nd, 2024. This is regarding concurrence with the Grashit County's approval of 311 East Superior Street redevelopment brownfield plan, and to replace Exhibit A with an updated brownfield plan. Your pleasure. Move to approve.
Right.
Have motion support on the useful background.
Just basically, it's to make it congruent with the OPA, the absolute property exemption certificate that we approved here at this board, to, to line it up with that, the date. What had originally been in the brownfield plan was a 23-year, 21, 23 years with a 21-year tax capture. But to line it up with the, the OPA that has been approved here, which will start in 25 and not 26, the new brownfield plan will be 22 years with 20 years of tax capture instead. So just to line it up with what was approved here from the OPA side of things.
Okay. And just for public's knowledge, this is to rehabilitate a building that was formerly, I think, last the Morning Sun office, and that's going to turn it in, they're going to add nine apartments in total, six up and three down in the back, plus commercial space in front of that building to rehabilitate it. Jim, you're from Greater Grashit Development, do you have anything to add, or?
You're looking front of class here. And you are. Excellent. Jim Wheeler at Greater Grashit, yeah, as Eric said, this is to line it up. And actually, Kathy was efficient enough to get the OPA application. It gets a little dicey in October, whether it gets kicked in, which year it does. Since it was in in time, it actually counts in 25, which will be a slight saving to the taxpayers of about 2,300 bucks because of the way it runs out. But again, the property, just for those, wow, that is a big group. For those everybody in attendance from that standpoint, it's a rehabilitation of an older property, and one of the things we're using as a tool for that is called a brownfield. Normally, that's thought about as something for polluted sites, but these work for obsolescence. And if you go up in these buildings, they're obsolete. And anybody that's in the inspection business will tell you that. And what it does is, the developer has to go in, update all those things, but then, over the years, they get to get some of their taxes they pay on it back for a given period of time to help them recover costs, so that instead of going out and building one out outside of town on a new site, they reuse something in the downtown, and it helps us all from the viability of our downtown. Part of our brownfield, a lot of those, you've seen those with Alma College, are real familiar with the Opera House, some of the pieces that have occurred with that. So kind of a long way around the bow, but we needed to line it up. We found out at that point, so we needed to start over again, so that we had our numbers lining up from that standpoint. Apologize for that, that just sometimes it falls that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Last chance, anybody else with comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. And that motion is carried as well. Moving on to our added item. Is that? Oh. Were you timing, Jim?
No. Because he's known for going.
Yeah. So L, number two, consideration of a resolution to provide for an extension of the requirements of Chapter 11, Section 2.5 of the Alma City Charter, which is related to the oath of office for newly elected city commissioners. Now, is this, was this part of the handout, the audience as well?
Yes.
Okay, so there should be copies of this out there for each of us, too. Support. Here we have a motion support. Is this the background?
Sure thing. The clerk, well, the clerk came to me this morning, goes, welcoming the charter, 10 days from the election of commissioners being elected, they must take the oath of office, or they have essentially declined the position. But the Board of Canisters at the county level have not completed and certified the election at this point. So if we had the commissioners take the oath of office, we're not, you don't technically have the office quite yet, because the votes are not completed. So we talked about a little bit, what do you think is what our charter means? Like, well, I think the charter means what it was in 1979, when it was done, not what our new requirements are at this, at the, at the new resolutions that have been approved since 2022. So to be on the safe side, we can, according to charter, extend the time period from when the newly elected commissioners would take the oath of office. So we thought it best to have you pass a resolution to extend that time, instead of guessing that we should follow the new laws, like we'll follow our charter, because that is our law, and extend the time for the Board of Canisters to finish their work, and then the newly elected officials will take their oath of office. So that's what this is about tonight. So, sorry to drop that item tonight, so.
How far out are we extending it?
At least 10 days.
Yeah, it's for 10 days past the date of certification.
So that gives us more than enough time. Basically the same window, you're just doing it after certification, but the first day.
Rather than the date of election.
Yeah. And that gives us time to have, make sure we have a meeting in between there, so it's just more efficient if we can all be at this, in the same room, same time to take the oath.
Okay, anybody else have comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving down to L, unfinished business. We have to consideration a resolution adjusting the establishment of any compensation of an officer or employee of the Alma Housing Commission upon the approval of the Alma City Commission. Your pleasure.
Move to approve. Support, whichever you need.
Okay, we have a motion support. Comments or questions?
Well, this is the table item that you, the table from the last meeting. The, the resolution in front of you would basically, the Housing Commission has asked for separation administratively, and they have separated administratively from the payroll side of things. I did hold, we did have a meeting with Craig Zies, Craig's here tonight, from House and Commission Chair, and the Director, Eric Chom, of the Housing Commission, to talk about healthcare, pensions, which are really the, the items that, that they, they're concerned about. And what they're concerned about with the separation side of things is, is really about if, if we ran into an issue with us here at the city, where we had to make changes, you know, be it healthcare, you know, reducing benefits to save dollars, or if we needed to reevaluate our pension program and look at something else, that they want to make sure since there's, their funding is coming directly from HUD at the federal level and no local dollars coming out of it, that they can maintain, you know, what they currently have for their employees. So that's the discussion we had. And then our Tuesday discussion for our special meeting, we discussed those, those two, those items of the healthcare, and that we're not, we're not a large organization. We're still not a backup to where we were, you know, like even three years ago. So from a healthcare standpoint, we're in a large group, which is a 50 to 300-person policy, and we're experience rated, too, meaning that underneath those numbers, that over these number of years, they can reasonably say that we're this healthy, and this is what they can give us for a premium and, and coverage is. We've been very fortunate. Our, our employees are very good about how they use their healthcare. And for the most part, we've, we've had really good rates come back with really good plans that we're able to offer our employees. But if we were to drop below that 50 mark, you know, we lose our experience, we lose, you know, that large group savings, those sort of things. So we talked about that, that special meeting, you know, is there ways that the Housing Commission stay underneath our plan, which they can. They're a component unit of the city, and they always will be a component unit of the city since when they were created, it was created by the city commission, and that the city manager appoints the Housing Commission, which oversees the day-to-day and, and the housing staff, and it points those, and then removals are done either through attrition or recommendation to the, to the commission from the city manager. So that being the case, they will always be a component of the, of the city of Alma. So they could always be a part of our healthcare plan. So that all being said, we did also speak with the Director, and I did have a video conference with MERS, who is our pension, pension holder. We talked about, okay, what would that do to us as a city from our ratio funding side of things? You know, we're working for the next, we have another 12 years on our 16-year plan to try to hit that 100% funding level, which is not required by the state of Michigan. But really, when we, we had a merge workshop a couple weeks ago, and, and really, as long as we're shooting, and we're in that 80 to 100% funded on a consistent basis, we're going to be in really good shape. So anyway, we asked them what the, how that would affect our ratio of funding for the rest of the, the organization. And they basically said, use the word that it'll be a wash, because they're taking the funds that are, you know, sent to them from, from HUD at the federal level, and they'll be moving it into their own, uh, plan, basically. Through resolution, that would have to be approved by this board, to move that, and basically be a wash. We would, it would not affect our funding ratio. Right now, we're as an organization about 76. If they were to move out, we'd be around 72% if they moved out of, of the plan. So that wouldn't really affect us all that much. We still be on task to hit our, our mark in 12 years that, you know, we did that, trying to shoot for that 100% funded level, and this, things drastically changed from a revenue standpoint, which we can never say for sure it's one way or the other. But that's our meeting that we had, and is that, they just wanted that assurance that in case we did run into that rough time, that they had that opportunity to make those choices if they had to. They're not, the indication that was given to me was they're not looking to change their, you know, the healthcare or the pension. It's just that if those types of things came up, they would want to be able to have that opportunity to look at what their funding levels were and, and go that route. The other thing that MERS did say, too, to me, and I did put in the newsletter there, I don't know if it's a positive or not, but say things did change at the federal level, and HUD wasn't giving as much money to, to housing commissions, and they ran into an issue of being able to fund their, say, their pension plan at 80% or more, that the city of Alma would not be liable for getting them to those, you know, up to that ratio, because they'd be separate from us currently. Say if that did happen now, and, and they fell below, it's really 60% is what they were giving grants out here a few, few, I don't know, about a year ago, some of that ARCA money at the state level to get some of the municipalities that fell below that 60%, at least above 60%, that the city would be liable to help, you know, fix that ratio. So she said there is a benefit from them having their own, their own policy from that standpoint. But, but we did discuss keeping them in the healthcare plan, and that would definitely be a benefit for us and for the Housing Commission, because the, the premiums would be more reasonable for the Housing Commission to keep them underneath our larger plan. And that does help us from a standpoint of making sure that we're, we are not getting to that, that 50 mark that would, you know, put it, it would be substantially different in what we'd be able to offer from a healthcare standpoint if we fell below 50. So I think I hit on all the points that we've, that we kind of discussed at the special meeting, and then our meeting with the Housing Chair and Director, and that's what's before you tonight on the resolution. It would be basically, they are not city employees, and what this resolution would say before any compensation would be done, that they bring whatever their recommendations are to this board, and this board would review and approve, is what this resolution.
Basically, it's just they have some transparency at our level.
That's, that's what, that's what this resolution would do, but I just wanted to give you a full, you know, I wonder what our meeting, which was a very good meeting with, with, with Craig and Eric, and discussing from both sides, and, and that's really where they're at. And, you know, we got, we do have to work together going forward, and, and we're, they're still, you know, housing is still a component unit of the city, and, and the city manager is the, the individual that appoints the board, and so, you know, that's how our, our connection will always be. And we, you know, we've also discussed, you know, we just never have done it, of, you know, how we bring back reports to this board from the Housing Commission, just to keep the, this board up to date on things. And, and just also that, what can we do to help the Housing Commission be, you know, can we help in some way to find other funding sources through the federal government to do maybe some other housing? So just to keep us more in touch with one another. So I think we had a good discussion, and, and we talked about those two items, the pension and healthcare, that we brought up during the special meeting. So I'll.
Okay. Anybody have questions or comments?
Yeah, I was kind of under the impression at the meeting that we had, that HUD wants them to separate. Are we still going to be in a legal battle with HUD after this? Are they going to be pursuing and force us in court?
No, I don't believe it was driven by HUD at all. There wasn't anything, I never saw any documentation that said HUD was driving it. The board actually went to this lawyer and got an opinion that they were seeking, because they wanted this to happen. It wasn't driven by HUD. I don't think they got a letter from HUD saying you must separate or anything like that. And in fact, there are, as we talked about at the meeting, there are other housing commissions. I believe they identified Cadillac as one being similar to ours, that is in similar circumstances to us. And I haven't seen anything or heard anything that's different than that.
And from a standpoint of, you know, helping the Housing Commission feel, you know, reassured that, you know, that if some, you know, for us, because, you know, we never know. I mean, state revenues could, revenue sharing could change, you know, and not, I don't think in next year is going to be, but who knows, two, three years, things could change, and things could change for us, on what we have to do, you know, looking at staffing levels, healthcare levels, those sort of things, that always are decisions every year. But to, you know, giving the Housing Commission that they do not, you know, they don't receive any funding from the federal, I'm sorry, from us here locally or at the state level, that they just want some assurance, you know, some assurances that they'll be able to offer to their employees, what they, what they can, and in, in that, I think it was stated even at both meetings, that they're not dissatisfied with what we are offering for healthcare, and, and we're in the ballpark, when you look at pay and compensation from like pension and those sort of things, that they're not, they're not complaining. They're just, they want to make sure that when they talk about control, what they meant was control of, you know, if, if we had to change things, that they'd be in control of making those decisions on their side. If, I, I think I'm getting the gist of, of what we were talking about. So.
And I wasn't at the special meeting, but there's, there, it was looked into that nothing would be detrimental to them by being separated from us, correct? I mean, as far as getting their healthcare and whatever.
Well, basically, if, we talked about healthcare, we looked at numbers, and, you know, to go on their own, they could do it, you know, and they, and they looked at similar, a similar plan to what we have. And then we also had our third-party run numbers for a small group, which is under 50 for them. And it is cheaper to be underneath the, the healthcare for the exact same coverage. You know, so say they can go up on their own, but it's, it's going to cost more. I mean, it's not going to cost hundreds of thousands more or anything like that, but it's, it's going to be a few hundred every month extra to do that.
And it's still public dollars. I mean, at the end of the day, it's all taxpayer money, and they're already, by doing the separation, they've already done taking out the administrative payroll and whatever else they're going to do, they've taken on additional expenses and workload to do that, because it's no longer running through the city who already has a system in place.
Right.
So they have a building, a system with backups and everything.
Right.
So they, they're increasing their cost of doing business and going out about it. And if they would have gone ahead with the insurance, as they originally planned to until we had that special meeting, it would have even cost them more for insurance, and it probably would have cost the city, or could have very well cost the, the city more, and for our insurance as well, so.
It's a benefit from the healthcare side of things to keep us, you know, together.
Right. That's what I was asking.
The pension side of it, if, you know, like I said, talking to MERS and, and looking at those of them, and the, and the funding ratios, there doesn't seem to be any negative, I guess, from the city side of things. It's not going to change us in any negative way.
Right.
But like I said, that's, that's where it came from when.
So they still believe that the benefits for them to have the option, if something happens to the city, is worth the negatives of paying more money?
Apparently, yes.
Okay. That's, that's what I wanted to make sure I understood correctly.
From my perspective, I think it's, from the city's perspective, is, is there's more risk than reward to separate the two. Obviously, if there's a situation where the city decides to change coverage at any given time, they can also come back to us at that time to then make that change. Why we would do that proactively and risk the opportunity of losing six people, and then now we get pushed into a different coverage bracket, quite frankly, isn't worth it from a city perspective. I think there's too much risk there with really not enough upside. Well, they could still separate and still be part of our healthcare plan. I mean, that, that's doable, you know, so.
That is in fact done. I mean, they've already done that, so.
So.
That's a done deal. That's not even on the table anymore.
Yeah. So that's doable, and, and they can do their own payroll, that is, you know, what it is. They can't, they're not city employees. That, you know, the court case that was done, you know, that's been decided there, so they are a separate entity, and it's good. So they are a separate entity and it's good, it would be good to keep working together in healthcare. The pension, like I said, they'd like to oversee that and they're, and they can do that, they have the funds to, you know, the funds to do that. And the funding comes from the federal government, doesn't come from us. And talking with MERS is there's not going to be any downside to, you know, to have us from, you know, to hurt our funding ratios. From a standpoint of, like, say, the, the resolution's on the table, like I said, the City Manager appoints the, appoints the board. Their intention, my discussion, was that they're not looking to, you know, do anything out of whack.
And that's what I'm just struggling to understand is what the, I mean, I, I don't understand, and maybe I don't need to, but I don't understand the reason for it when it, the only thing I'm hearing are that, you know, they're going to have to be in charge of this and that it might cost them more money and all that. So I don't, I just don't understand it. So I feel like I'm missing something key or important and that's what I'm just trying to find out. And maybe I'm not, but I just.
I, I feel the exact same way, Roxanne. I don't understand that when we asked them at this meeting or both meetings, there was not a great reason for it, other than basically the lack of trust that they think we're going to change our plan and it's going to negatively affect them without doing something to allow them to protect themselves from, you know. I mean, that's basically what it's down to.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it the way.
There's a couple of other possibilities that are more nefarious. I prefer that we don't go there, but basically I think this resolution, all it does is make them be transparent, they got to come before us if they're going to raise their rates or their wages, you know. Because it's, it's an organization that doesn't see a lot of the light of the day. I mean, they don't get cameras at their meetings the way we do and so.
I took it a little differently. I thought they'd need a good case. My concern right now is if we vote for this, are we going to be legally entangled with them continuing? Are we going to be paying lawyer fees and stuff? Are we, is this satisfying to them or what was?
Well, I, you don't know. Nobody knows what it's going to be. They may choose to.
Because their lawyers are pretty firm about this, so I'm just worried we're going to be spending.
We all know if you pay a lawyer, they will bring back whatever opinion you want them to have, so that's.
True, but then we continue to battle and pay.
As far as I'm concerned, we're done after this. If we pass this, we will be done. It's just, if everybody goes into the future and does their own thing, it's just a matter of bringing their report before us on an annual basis and we check the box and rubber stamp whatever they're doing as long as it's reasonable.
Was there a means for them to control their own pension plan without fully separating from the city? Is that possible?
That's a good question. We didn't talk about that with, with MERS. I mean, we can get another conference call with them.
I was just curious because, I mean, like others, I'm looking.
Because they, they are certainly in their own division, like the transportation is. But if, say, you were going to, you could make a change in that division, yes. Okay, yeah. You could make a change in that division, yes, but that would be controlled by this board and not the Housing Commission board because that particular division is underneath our pension plan. For the Housing Commission to, to directly control that, you know, what, what the benefits would be or whatever, that would be, have to be a separate plan underneath just the Housing Commission, not underneath the city of Alma's pension plan. Because we have, you know, the police, before 1999, when they moved them out of the pension into a DC plan, defined contribution plan, there was three different plans that the contract held because different time periods people were working here. So when they closed those out, there's different plans through those. The rest, the carve-up that we did with transportation, they have the same benefits that, that the Housing Commission and the rest of the general employees have as well. But if they were wanting to change those, you would have the opportunity to, just for that division, you could just deal with that one division if you felt that there was a need to do that. But it wouldn't be underneath the control of the Housing Commission, that would be under the control of the city to look at those changes because it's underneath our plan. They'd have to be separated out of our plan, basically, like a better word, the, the Housing Commission would become, in essence, its own municipality. And they would control that plan and oversee it and, and control the benefits of it. That's, that's how that would have to work. But if you were to do, if you have to do this, and then to Lori's question there, I don't know, but they would have to, say they wanted to change some benefits, the Housing Commission would have to, you know, put together a recommendation and then basically say, here's what we'd like to do with our funds and bring it to this board and say, could you say okay to this? That's what this resolution, from my understanding, is what that would do.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, with that, we do have a resolution for us. All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving down to appropriations. Does anyone have any questions to pay the bills tonight?
Move to pay the appropriations.
Good motion support, any comments or questions on the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Commissioner comments? Lori, would you like to lead off tonight?
Um, I don't know what Eric was saying to our, to Sarah and everybody involved in making it a safe and, um, election. But that's it.
Thank you. John?
I'm good.
Nothing? True.
Yeah, just congratulations and thank you to Sarah and team for another very smooth election. Very much appreciate all the work that goes in, not from just Sarah, but all volunteers.
Yes, thank you to Sarah and team. It's wonderful and she'd be very proud of your stuff. And thank you to the Public Library and the friends who brought in author Rick Mixter on Sunday to talk about his book, Edmund Fitzgerald. It was fascinating. They had one, they were having one talk and that sold out, so they added a second and they were both jam full. He was very entertaining. I could have, he spoke for an hour, I could have listened for longer, so I, I'm appreciative of them bringing things to work like that.
Great.
Nothing else, thank you.
Roger?
Just to re-echo Sarah, you have no idea how proud the City Commission is of you and your, and your team. So wonderful job. Every time there's an election, we just kind of put it out of our minds because it's good to take it the way it should be. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Sarah? Goodbye.
Bye.
No? Nothing? Okay. Eric, can you think further? Okay. And I would like to echo my appreciation, Sarah. You did a great job once again. We do appreciate it. And we also understand the amount of work that's been added to that activity, the election over the last couple of years. And the last-minute decisions, the last-minute changes that are coming down from the state and the questions at the national level. And it's just, I, I know it was a heavy, heavy lift for you and your team, so definitely is appreciated. I'd also like to express my appreciation to the citizens of the city of Alma for voting and doing what they did. Basically, we made it a very uneventful day for everybody here in town. It could have been different than that, it has been in the past, not necessarily here in our town, but it was nice to see everything go peacefully and there was no, no threats of anything here that I'm aware of, or no incidents at all. So that was, that was definitely good news this year because there was a lot of preparation that had to be done in case something did go south. And I know that added, in addition, all the rule changes that, security protocols added a lot more to your table, so thank you for that. Okay, with that, the commissioner will, and we'd like to invite the public to address the commission. So if you'd like to say anything to us, please come to the podium, state your name and address. And you can have each up to five minutes to address the commission. Who would like to go first?
The commissioner.
I think there's extra credit for any college student.
You'll be on camera.
Yeah, you can be on camera. Document that you're here. I'm not seeing anybody come forward, so I'm going to assume that nobody wants to speak